Vacuum.
Oh, okay.
Vacuum.
I'd like to call the Board of Trustees for the Village of Cambridge, our meeting of February 13th to order, please roll call.
Ryan.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Whitworth.
Here.
Holland Beck.
Here.
Chris Blackwood.
Here.
Here. Mr. Christ, he's on a vacation. I don't know where he's at. It's someplace warm.
Warm, that's rude.
Okay, all right, we can stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. All right, we'll get started here. Lisa, proof of posting.
The agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, the Bedderbank, Cambridge Post Office, and the Village website.
Okay, all right, good. We are going to go into public comment. We will start off with our current Dane County Supervisor Kate McGinnity, and I've asked Kate to come in and kind of give us an update and tell us where she is at professionally speaking and what we can look forward to here in the months ahead. Welcome, Kate.
Well, thank you and good evening, Chair McNally and wonderful members of our village board, staff, residents that are here, and anybody that's tuning in. I would like to start by saying this is my final update, and it has been just a huge honor and privilege to serve Dane County's District 37, including the Village of Cambridge and 10 other municipalities. I gained two my second term. I started with nine, ended with 11. About 150 to 155 square miles is my, the area that I cover. And I'm grateful for what we've been able to accomplish. I want to focus on two areas that I think have, we've made a lot of progress in and that affect Cambridge directly. One of my early initiatives that I knew from the start that I wanted to focus on was this huge bubble of baby boomers that are aging and our services for our older adults that we're calling our senior citizens. Now, that's a new term, our older adults. And looking at not only creating additional services and resources, but bringing what we already had available in Dane County to the rural areas and to my district, our district. Because as we know, like for Cambridge, our senior focal point is all the way in McFarland, which when we live without public transportation and we're serving older folks, that's not all that close, you know, and especially, you know, with roads, with, you know, weather, Wisconsin weather, although it's very hard to predict these days with tornadoes in February. However, you know, one of the first things we, I did, we did in this area is we did a survey of all of our seniors, all of our older adults, and found out what their priorities were. Now, we did this in the midst of the pandemic, and, you know, we had to get, you know, we did it both digitally, but we also got these paper surveys out, and we found out the areas that our, our Cambridge area, um, older adults are very interested in. And one of them was they want more programming and they want it locally. So to that end, Carrie Marin, who will come up later in the conversation again, but Carrie Marin, who as we know runs our food pantry and also is very connected to our CAPS program, and I have been, I knew her, you know, we were, uh, our kids came up together, so we were music moms and all of that. And then this last four years, we've worked very closely together around services for our older adults. So one of the things that we got started is the Computer Buddies Program, which pairs up our fourth and fifth grade youngsters with older adults in a digital format. So it's like a pen pal program. However, it kind of urges our older adults to up their digital game, and of course, it does that generational connection between our youngsters and our older adults in our community. So it just strengthens those community ties, and we also started that in Deerfield. I think the, the program that I'm really excited about is, you know, when Mark said, "Where are we going?" The next step is that there is a program called Strong Bodies. It's a federal national program for older adults that have both nutritional insecurity as well as an exercise program. And in order for this program to occur, we need people with nutritional insecurity. However, Dane County, I, I served on the AAA Board, the Area Agency for Aging Board, as one of my appointments as a, as a Dane County Supervisor, and we are interested, I found out that Dane County was interested in doing a pilot program where we would then train our trainers and be able to keep this program local and not necessarily connected to the nutritional insecurity, once we have our own people trained. So Carrie Marin, Kate McGinnity, Laura Payne, who is the former Jefferson County Supervisor, and Meg Turville Heights, who is the current Jefferson County Supervisor, are all going to get trained in this at the cost of Dane County, even though Meg and Laura live in Jefferson County. Dane County is going to pay its hundreds of dollars for each of us, for a full day training for us, and we are going to start offering this program. We're hoping as soon as the summer session through our CAPS, we've been working, because Carrie Marin also has a connection to CAPS. So we're going to run that through that program, through our CAPS program. We will, the four of us will volunteer our leadership of it and our, our ability to help train the trainers. We'll get it up and running here so that it'll be sustained in this area, serving, you know, Cambridge, Oakland, Rockdale, Christiana, and then we'll move on to other areas of District 37. So I'm really excited about that program coming here. Carrie Marin and I have been doing many meetings and going out and visiting many other senior centers. We're really looking at that as a possibility in Cambridge in the future. We've got some ideas about that. So that's what's going on with our older adults and, oh, and the other thing is that our older adults wanted was a resource directory. It's very confusing when you live, when you have a community that is half in one county and half in another county. And so we have put together a resource directory that sorts out what is available to our Jefferson County residents, what is available to our Dane County residents, what is, what is available to all of our older adults in the area, and that is at the printer as I speak. So that will be getting distributed probably within the next few weeks to a month. So we're, we're very happy about that because that was a big concern of, on, on the survey. Another issue on the survey, which I'm very glad it was there, was broadband. And it is the accomplishment probably of which I am most proud. When I decided to run for this seat, I knew, I didn't know the difference between a megabyte and a megabit. I didn't know what upload and download speeds were. I knew zero about broadband, and I didn't know it was an issue. Because all the maps, the PSC maps and the FCC maps, said that we were 96 to 98% covered in Dane County for broadband, and that was not true. As you might remember, those of you that were on, on the board early on, one of the first things we did is took our own data and find, found out we're more like 70 to 75% covered. And most of the lack of coverage is in our rural areas, primarily our towns, but also the edges of our, of our villages. So, you know, I feel like it's a time, and you are all public servants, and I'm so, and our staff, and I'm so grateful to you, and people are frustrated with government, and I just want to say, it was so satisfying to go from not even knowing broadband was an issue to in early 2020, before COVID came to stay, we knocked, you know, I knocked, I think, 2,000, over 2,000 doors in January and February, and learned, I was hearing from people at doors, that they didn't have broadband. And taking it from the needs of the residents to then going to my colleagues on the board who said, "You're create, you know, that, that can't be true, Kate. You know, what do you mean? It's, you know, it's 2020." And convincing my board colleagues, convincing a colleague to come with me on this journey, setting up a task force of 15 of our most talented people across Dane County. Nobody had ever looked at this as a county issue. And finally, we did, and we have come so far. So now we have our own data. Now we have our own infrastructure study, so we know where the infrastructure is. Our internet service providers don't need to provide that because of, you know, fair competition, you know, they're, they're for-profit companies, so we didn't know where our infrastructure even was, so how do we know where to put it, right? So now we have that. And the final gift was that we have now a full-time broadband coordinator. And in, in one delicious strike of his pen, Executive Prezy went from it being based on the ARPA funding, based on, you know, the COVID funding, so we were only going to have it for a year, to it as a permanent position on the Dane County staff. And that is something, I didn't hear it as much from our villages, but we heard it strongly from our towns. We can't do this on our own. Because the only way to get broadband expansion is to, is for public-private partnership with an internet service provider and a local government to pair together. Well, what local governments have time to write grants that are, you know, thick and, and, you know, track all the grant cycles? And so that's what we now have, and he's already been out, his name is Jaren McCallum, we hired him away from the PSC. He had been working with our broadband and presenting to us several times over the, over the several years. And so he is already out working with our towns. We've already gotten, you know, put in for, applied for, to get one pocket of, you know, one of our areas in one of my towns covered. So we're making progress, and I feel like we have literally what we need in place to take Dane County into the next, you know, millennium, you know, I mean, we really are planning for the future around broadband. Because we had, part of my stepping down was a recognition of what was left to do in broadband and a recognition I could do it a little more freely as a private citizen. So the next steps are right, just yesterday, I read our newest piece of legislation that will probably not go to the board this Thursday, but will go to the first meeting in March. We're restructuring the broadband task force. We're kind of paring it down a little bit, and we're creating a position for a member-at-large, which I will be seeking, so that I could stay, I'm hoping to stay as an appointed member on the broadband task force and continue to work with our towns and villages, first in District 37, now that we know where all the pockets are, where we need broadband and cable, and then, you know, beyond for the rest of the, the county. So that is where we're going with that. What we're looking at is, in addition to having Jaren, who is our broad, Jaren McCallum, who is our broadband coordinator, we're looking at recruiting and training kind of broadband champions. I realize I have four years of knowledge of where the pockets are, you know, and, and so that knowledge needs to be passed on and held on to, and it needs to not be our, I mean, our elected officials need to know about it. They need to be reported to and weigh in on it, but it's, it's not fair to ask it of them, you know, and so we, and, and we have people in communities that are interested in getting involved. And so we will definitely capitalize on that. So that's where you'll be seeing me. I'll be leading Strong Bodies and, and doing the broadband thing, and so you won't get rid of me too easily. As a final act of service and great love to this district, I recruited my replacement who doesn't have an opponent, so it's okay, I mean, if she did have an opponent, it would not be proper to speak about it until she was elected, but since we know that she is basically already elected, it is Carrie Marin, and so we will continue to work together, as I said, on the senior and the older adult issues, as well as everything else. And she has very graciously, we've had lots of conversations, and she's very happy to, very willing to have me stay involved in broadband, and then I'll report to her. So she'll be, you know, doing all the legislative pieces as the county board supervisor, but I'll continue to volunteer and let her know, you know, and inform her about where we're at.
Okay.
So that's about all I have, but I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Questions from anybody? Well, we'll look forward to seeing you stop in here and let us know how it's going, and hopefully you'll get this position that you're looking for. And I wish you nothing but success, and on behalf of the residents of Cambridge and the board here, thank you very much for your service. We appreciate.
Thank you, and thanks to all of you.
Okay, all right.
Take care.
Uh, okay, we're still in public comment. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Maybe it's something on the agenda or not. Okay, all right, seeing none, we'll move on. Let's start with approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. A second.
All right. Is there any discussion, any, any questions on all of this? There's a lot in there.
Good minutes.
All right. Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Say aye. Opposed? Carries. All right, reports. Reports, I wanted to just mention, I followed up with the five folks that were interested in the position that we had here, and we've got Kristen. Talked with Kristen about law enforcement. She was here at an earlier meeting to kind of get a sense of how that was looking. But I did speak with a couple of others, and I had to leave messages with two individuals. Primarily, you know, these are folks that are interested and they wanted to help out, and this started with a trustee position, but maybe they'd be willing to serve on a committee. And so I did get ahold of them, and at least two of them, three with Kristen. So hopefully we'll, we'll hear, and we'll go from there. So that's my report. Move on. Plan Commission, meeting of last night, I guess.
Yeah, we met last night. One of the items is on the agenda for our discussion later. The other item that was discussed, Dancing Goat Distillery came in and gave a rough next phase for their development out there of what they're planning, and then their process they're going to go through state approval and all that. So they just wanted to get, get it in front of us so that we could see what's going on.
Okay, questions? All right, thank you. Here we go, Eric. Joint Law Enforcement. We just had a meeting here.
Yeah, we just, so I guess the, the big topic was personnel. Joe Feis has been selected for detective, so he'll be leaving in, well, it's kind of up in the air when he's going to be leaving, but we have two replacements, Terry Boyce and Sean O'Donnell, very, very good candidates. When we interviewed them both, super impressive, so it's good to have both of them on board. They'll be starting up, uh, Boyce is finishing up training pretty soon. He got on with the SWAT team, and he's just crushing it in training. So he is excelling, and Chad said he's doing very well, and Sean's going to start training pretty soon here. And then that timing when Joe leaves and they start, that's still kind of up in the air, but what was it when?
March 20th.
March 20th.
Feis will start March 20th. He'll do his second week of on-road training here in Cambridge. He'll do one week solo within the county, but they're so impressed with how he's doing. This second week will be here. O'Donnell is starting his training February 20th. It's expected his first day here will be June 1st. Captain Porter said they'd like Feis to stay. Boyce will go a couple days with him to get the lay of the schedule. He'll be taking Joe's second shift slot. O'Donnell will be taking the power shift slot. So Feis will work with him for a couple days. He'll go with Chad a couple days before Joe is gone totally, and he's on his own.
And then we talked about the reports of all the calls, nothing out of the ordinary. There was a decrease in calls in December, which is, you know, it's a good thing, but everything seems to be going pretty smooth.
Okay. Questions for Chuck? All right, okay. Now we're going to move on to our Director of Public Works, Mr. Todd Lord. If you can give us an update, sir.
Good evening. We've been working on trees with, with Treeworks, and we've got a deal with them where we get breaks on, if we can clean up, a majority of what's there, and we've been getting breaks on, on payouts for, for that. So that's, that's just started, and you'll notice that you've been seeing trees all up and down. A lot of that's Cody and, Cody and Jay having at, and, and we're preparing for spring cleanups. We were down in the park today, down in the park doing some more tree stuff, getting them off, getting the dead trees off the river, stuff like that, and that's pretty much where we're at right now.
Equipment is okay, as far as everything?
Uh, we got the UTV up and running, for a lot less than I thought we would, so.
All right. And then tomorrow night, we're not supposed to get too much snow?
No, it's supposed to be more like slush, and be like a little bit of cleaner, probably a little bit of salting, something like that. The equipment's, the equipment's there for that, and then some, so.
Questions for Todd? Todd, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming by to give us a report.
Thank you, Todd.
All right.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Okay, Village Office Update. Lisa.
Tammy has been working hard, has finished up year-end reconciliation and the financial reports and other information for the auditors. We've all kind of been entering into their online portal for the audit, as well as the PSC report. So utilities have been working with us on that as well. Vicky and Derek, they did begin their initial field work last week, so we're continuing to get a lot of requests from them that we're filling as they come in, and they are looking to do the rest of the audit in March, so we have a deadline, first week in March, to get more information into their portal. So working a lot with them. Find our tax collections here at the village level and everything exported to the county. We'll be working on final settlements for that, additional year-end reports that we have to do for different agencies, beginning to ramp up for the elections, ordering supplies. We've had some training. Absentee ballots for military and overseas actually have to be mailed out this week for the April election. So April election's already starting. Just finished up working with the school, an emergency plan for Election Day, the old middle school, historic school gym, is our backup for emergencies. So working with them on logistics on how that happens. So that had to be done for some grants we've applied for with the Elections Commission. We needed updated emergency plans. Been working a lot with elders on both the PSC rate case as well as the safe drinking water loan. So a lot of questions from PSC, the state, is reviewing all the documents that have been submitted. So a lot of follow-up on those. Lot of ongoing projects, Fire and EMS, Koshkannan Creek, Quick Trip, the Vineyards Apartments, which we'll be touching on later in the agenda, the sampling, just a lot of ongoing things that we're working on.
You mentioned Koshkannan Creek. What, where are we at on this one?
I could give an update on this. This is, we actually have good news on this. So you'll recall, you'll recall that the village had worked with Jefferson County Drainage Board to remove some trees with the understanding that we were within the drainage district, which would qualify us from a permitting exemption from DNR for the wetlands and the waterways work. Then we got a notice of claim from the DNR saying, "Where are your permits for all of this work?" And we responded to the DNR by explaining that we understood that we were within the drainage district boundaries. DNR was not convinced for a long time that that was the case, and DNR and DATCAP, the Department of Agriculture, Trade, and Consumer Protection, had maps showing that the drainage district border ended north of where we had done the work. But then we, we dug a little further and found that those maps were just for, you know, for informational purposes, the maps that they were relying on. And we were in touch with the Drainage County, Drainage, the Jefferson County Drainage Board Chair, Dave Hughes, who gave us these, he found these old maps that had been recorded on file at the Jefferson County Courthouse decades ago that were the original drainage district maps that had not been changed. And then after much back and forth, finally, DNR and DATCAP both agreed, yes, those were the official maps. We were right to rely on them, and it sounds like, it sounds like we are now in good shape. We haven't, no, just to be clear, we have, DNR has not officially backed off their, their enforcement position, but the fact that they were hanging their hat on DATCAP's interpretation of the maps is a good sign. We're optimistic that they will, if not formally withdraw their enforcement, at least they will take no further action.
Okay. Will they send us any kind of correspondence to that?
We're not sure that they're willing to do that, you know, they, they might not want to admit, they might not want to have to backtrack anything they previously said. But if they don't, we will follow up and, and not on them.
And we do have verification from DATCAP that, yes, they were in error, the maps we were citing are correct, and.
And we definitely have correspondence on file saying that if indeed this was within a drainage district, then we were not required to get wetland permits or waterways permits, because drainage districts are exempt from all of those permitting requirements.
And how old were the maps over at Jefferson County that they looked at?
Pretty old, maybe.
They're old, but they are recorded.
They are the original.
The original recordings for the drainage district.
And there have been no changes made since that time.
Yeah.
It was just that DATCAP has this informational viewing, viewing maps that are available to the public, but it says on the website, and we pointed this out, you know, it, do not rely on these maps. They're for informational purposes only. They may not be accurate. So, and we had said, if there's a dispute between these informational maps and the maps on file, we should be looking at the maps on file. And so the tricky thing was, they were really hard to read on the copy that Dave Hughes had sent. You had to look.
And the recorded kind of follows the border of the creek, whereas the ones on the website that they say don't take are more square, you know, here is the area, not, yes, it follows the creek. Whereas the ones recorded follow the creek and show that.
So this is good news, not just to close on this case, but, I mean, we were on the phone with Dave Hughes a number of times, and he said, "This is going to be a recurring issue. They're going to want to continue to dredge. There's more effluent from Sun Prairie and Cottage Grove coming down the pipe, and it's going to be necessary to continue to maintain the waterway there." So.
Yeah, they didn't do any dredging out there.
Yeah, we didn't, sorry, I didn't mean to say continue to dredge, but it, it likely, they will want to dredge in the future. Maintenance work, they'll continue to want to do as well.
So these maps were what, maybe 50 years old?
I think they were about 1950, yep.
Okay, so 75 years old. Okay, all right, well, this is a.
Official recorded maps of the drainage district.
So we will follow up if we don't hear anything in a month or so.
Hoping DNR will just voluntarily withdraw, but if, if necessary, I'll, I'll send something, just saying, just to be clear, we're reverting back to our previous position that we had taken when we, when we said early on that we were covered by the drainage district exemption.
All right, thank you.
It was just late last week, Friday, I believe, that we received the email from DATCAP, so.
All right, good job, both of you. Any other questions for Lisa?
Lisa, that's why you save everything, huh?
Uh-huh. I love my paper still.
All righty. Okay, let's move on. Item seven, treasure. Alrighty. Okay, let's move on. Item seven, Treasurer's Report and Bills. Which way you want to go here, Tammy?
Well, the Treasurer's Report, Lisa covered pretty much what I've been doing and working with auditors a lot in the last couple of weeks. It's taken up a majority of my time. But the bills, the first run was seventy-two thousand four hundred sixty-six dollars and four cents. And the second run, three thousand two hundred three dollars forty-nine cents. For a total of seventy-five thousand six hundred sixty-nine and fifty-three cents.
Make a motion, pay the bills in the amount of seventy-five thousand six hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents.
Second. Got a motion in a second. Do we have any questions? Any concerns, issues?
I will make note, next week, we will have to be cutting the second round of tax settlements to the other taxing jurisdictions. We won't get the numbers from the county until later this week. And they're due to taxing jurisdictions next week. So, we'll let you know when we cut those.
Is that the batch that you bring into Madison and then over to Dane County or Jefferson County?
We have to pay Madison College, the School District, Dane County, Jefferson County, for the taxes we collected.
Right.
And we then distribute their share to them.
Okay, alright. Okay, any other questions? Got a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Franklin Whitworth.
Yes.
Coming back.
Yes.
Chris Blackwood.
Yes.
Brian Egg.
Yes.
Nellie.
Yes. Alright, thank you. Alright, let's move on. New business, item eight A, rate schedule for Amundson Community Center rentals. Recommendation from Public Works Committee.
Lisa, do you want to take this?
I can take this. So, this was at Public Works last week. It kind of started with a discussion at the staff level. Our previous custodian, back to when Peach was here, was a village employee. Part of her responsibility was opening and closing the Amundson Center. When she left, the board and library board decided to go with conditions for cleaning. At the time, Judy and I, that they would open and close the building. Obviously, during COVID, it was very quiet. Since COVID, we've really seen an uptick in the rentals of the Amundson Center. We're there now on call every weekend, almost to be opening and closing the building. The policy that had been put in place was they'd be paid a dollar or an hour to come open and hour to close because they're on call at time and a half. So, on a weekend, we're paying seventy-five dollars for somebody to come and open and close the building. Which, we're not collecting that in rentals. So, and they're getting tired of being on call every weekend to open and close. You know, especially to open the building at ten o'clock and they have to come back at three in the afternoon to close. Their whole day is shot. So, more things are going before Public Works is looking at possibly rekeying, having a key drop box so that we're not having to have somebody come in and so forth. But what we did look at at this time was changing, we looked at different area communities, what they were charging for their rentals and stuff. So, included in your packet is what was discussed to increase our rates. And instead of doing it hourly, to do blocks, a morning block, an afternoon, an evening. If you want it for the whole day, you could rent for three blocks. But it has in there the changes that were proposed, including things. In the past, we charged nonprofit organizations ten dollars for the whole year. They could literally come in twenty times during the year and pay that one-time ten-dollar fee. We have, the committee proposed upping that to fifty dollars. Fifty dollars per block for community individuals. We didn't want to, in the discussion, make it so it wasn't an affordable place, but enough to help cover our expenses to cover the cost of possibly rekeying the building and so forth. So, I did a memo kind of outlining the changes as well as our current application showing the changes.
These schedules consistent with other municipalities like Deerfield and Christiana, so it's pretty reasonable, I think. And this is kind of phase one of a more elaborate plan of, you know, doing the drop box and maybe getting cameras. We wanted to talk to Sarah Maholsky from the Plan Commission. She specializes in that stuff. And before spending money on this stuff, we wanted to talk to her and get her professional opinion on what exactly we should do. So, but we wanted to get these rates set in place. We're not losing money by, when people use the spaces.
I did send information to her, so I didn't hear back from her.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the rate schedule for the Amundson Community Center rentals. Recommendations from the Public Works Committee.
A second.
I know when I first looked at this or when I first heard it, I thought, geez, I don't know. I mean, people count on this, the facilities to be available. But I also understand, you know, if staff isn't here to be calling you in at ten o'clock on a Saturday to open up and then somebody's got to swing by, and I know I've had to do a little, just a smidgen once with the, when we had the concerts and they didn't have the porta potties. Yeah, I had to come in. And so, it does seem reasonable that we look at this and, you know, make an adjustment for the, for these rates, so. Okay.
So, if we need to continue to use staff to do the work, then what we're charging for individual requests, is it really covering the cost of staff?
No. I do expect the Public Works Committee will be meeting again to look at some of those other options. So, I do expect changes to be coming on, you know, for the time being, staff will continue to open and close until we...
I think that'll be in our next meeting. We'll talk about that. Because, yeah, it'll be the cost upfront, but it'll pay for itself over time, for sure, so. Something we should do.
Is there any analysis on, like, when we rent out the space, electrical and water usage increases there?
No. No. We do have a charge that we kept the same, fifty dollars if people are using the kitchen. If they're making food, if they're using the dishwasher, if they're, you know, if they're just throwing something in the fridge, we don't charge them for the kitchen. But if they're actually cooking, using our dishes, using our dishwasher, they do get charged the fifty dollars additional for the kitchen fee.
Okay.
So when you, when you get, I know one of the things you're looking at is perhaps putting in cameras. Would the cameras cover the kitchen as well? Because while you say you don't charge, if someone actually does use the kitchen...
No, the cameras would be more at the door, not the kitchen, but...
Is the kitchen keyed separately than from the other rooms downstairs?
No, not at this point. You know, and as we talked about keying, it was kind of the lower door and the rooms down here. The senior room, this room, the kitchen, would be where those keys, we can lock the elevator. That was one of my big concerns with the court and police upstairs. But we can lock the elevator, so it would be a different key for the door down here. Other communities have a lost key, you're charged to rekey the building. You know, so.
So we'd look into something like that if we're going to give them a key?
Yeah. Our policies would change with it.
Alright. Thank you. You answered my question. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Okay, this is money, so we'll go with roll call.
This isn't spending money, though.
Not spending. This is just changing the rate schedule.
Alright, well then, that's easy. We have a motion in a second, correct?
Yep.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have a new rate structure. Get that out. How do you want to publicize that? I mean, it's...
We'll get the form updated and we can put it on the website. But as people call now, if they've already reserved, they'll be at the current rate. Anybody new, Vicky will inform them that there's a new rate.
Okay. Alright, moving on. Item eight B, hours for the compost site. Recommendation from the Public Works Committee, again.
So, right now, the compost site's open year-round. In the winter, there's really no reason for people to be going back there. I guess, we've had people go back there and dropping off stumps and stuff they shouldn't have. So, we thought we'll just lock it down during the winter, you know, the winter season. So we're thinking, we talked fifteen December through fifteen April. I think that's a little late into the spring, so I was thinking fifteen March. You know, because it gets warm up, people want to do their spring cleanup early. I thought fifteen December, fifteen March would be adequate. And then, Todd, are you going to put your number out there just in case if someone like... Okay, cool. So if someone absolutely needs to get in there, and it's legit, and they need to drop some off that they should be dropping off, well, they can call him and then he can open it up for them, but, pretty simple. Just mitigate some risk of people doing things they shouldn't.
Okay, so you want to go fifteenth of December through fifteenth of March?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to change the hours for the compost site, December fifteenth through March fifteenth, to lock it down.
I will second that.
Okay. Further discussion?
I wasn't really in favor of it until I heard that if somebody does have something, they can call and the Public Works folks would come and let them in. So, that, only because my husband and my neighbor have both, like, taken down evergreen branches and stuff this winter, because it's been such a mild winter for the most part. So they've trimmed up some evergreens and it's like, well, now what do we do with this stuff? So we took it out to the dome, but...
And the staff does continue to do brush pickup and so forth year-round and pick up Christmas trees. So, that was part of the discussion, too.
Okay. Good. Alright, so that makes me happy, so now I'm good.
Alright, all those in, all those in favor of changing the hours for a compost site, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries. We'll get that out right away. Okay, item eight C, implementation of a capital improvement project or plan. Recommendation from the Public Works Committee.
So, Todd brought this up at the last meeting, and it's a really good idea. And I guess we did have a capital improvement plan for all Public Works commitment, equipment back in the day, and it kind of expired, so we're looking at just re-upping that. So we have a plan for all, you know, all that equipment. So, we haven't really started that. Todd's starting to gather his numbers. And hopefully, maybe at the next Public Works meeting, we could start diving into that and putting this five-year plan together. I think five years is probably adequate. So we're not, you know, trying to catch up with the budget. We're getting ahead of this. So we know what's coming down the pipe as far as budgeting.
And each year, you would review it and add the, you know, drop off the year, current year, and add in the next year?
Yep, that's the plan, is this.
That's what we used to do.
Stay on top of it, so we don't get behind.
Okay.
So I don't know if we need a motion or just kind of more of an update on what we're looking to do.
I like it.
Cool.
Okay, alright. Any other questions for either Todd or Chuck? Okay, alright. You know what you got to do, Todd. Thank you.
And we'll extend it to other municipal things, not just Public Works. If there's things for the building, election equipment, you know, anything then.
Absolutely.
Alright. Okay, item eight D, we're going to discuss a certified survey map from Bill Ranguet, Badgelen Properties. Bill, if you want to come up, introduce yourself. And a recommendation from the Plan Commission.
Okay, so, Plan Commission met last night. This was on their agenda. Brief overview of what this request was, there's a current parcel, it is one big parcel. This request is to split it into three. There was some further discussion about what would go on those parcels. But for the purpose of that meeting last night, it was just deciding whether or not we agreed with the, his request to split it into three parcels. So that is kind of where we kept the conversation as much as we could. There was some discussion of what Plan Commission would like to see or not see on those particular parcels. And recommendation from Plan Commission was to approve the site CSM for three parcels. Mr. Ranguet?
We covered three well. So right currently, that's about a nine-acre parcel. And we're looking to divide it into three, along with adding Vineyard Drive to the Far West property line. So it'll end up with about seven acres on all those three lots. We had told us seven acres roughly. We'll be coming back, hopefully in March, to the Plan Commission with the proposal for, to develop on Lot One and Lot Two. I did have more discussions with the gentleman today. But then I talked to the ones looking to build some smaller, single-family homes on more condensed lots. I don't know, because I haven't looked at the, what the ordinance is for size for single-family lots in the village here or not. So we might need to have a conditional use on that, because we're looking at seven to eight thousand square foot lots on it. But again, that's, that would be for Lot Three. Lots One and Two, we're looking to build additional apartments on. After speaking with the Plan Commission or getting their input, I'm thinking that our proposal will just come in for Lot One to do the multifamily on. Two twenty-two unit buildings, very similar to what's currently there on the corner of Vineyard and Kenson. The same architect is designing these buildings, so they'll be very similar in looks on it. And then, I really don't know about Lot Two, whether I'll come back for that. Maybe at a different time, but I don't know if it'll be for the March one or not. I'm thinking it's just going to be Lot One at this time. Maybe Lot Three, if I can get enough information in time for that one, and we'll just see what happens with Lot Two. Because, again, with the discussion with the builder that's looking at Lot Three, be interested in doing the same thing on Lot Two also. Just depending on how sales go and if you can keep the cost in the right level.
Let's start with, anybody want to make a motion to get it to where we can talk about?
I have a motion to approve the CSM, splitting this one parcel into three.
Okay, now, questions, sir?
The only caveat is, CSM is this access road from twelve eighteen to Vineyard Drive is probably not going to ever happen because of the DOT restrictions. So, how does it, you know, we've run into CSM issues before where we're not doing exactly what the CSM said. Is this going to become a problem? You know what I mean, like, it shows that it's there, but it's probably not going to happen. I don't, you understand what I'm saying, like?
It's there, reserved for future, if ever needed. Anything built on the lot would still be needing to meet setbacks and stuff. So it wouldn't, you know, oftentimes, you'll see the reserve for future roads on CSMs or... So I don't think it's any issue, you know.
Okay.
If...
And would it be great if DOT said, "Yeah, let's put in a road, we need, you know." But we won't hold our breath.
Don't hold your breath to that one.
But it's there in case we need it, because it's, would be harder to go back in the future and, you know.
Yeah, like, we've had the issues where people coming back and going, "Hey, you didn't build, that's supposed to be there. Why isn't it there? You changed the CSM," you know, like, we ran into that past couple of years. Just bringing it up now.
It's, it's for future, it's coming.
Okay, alright. But obviously, you know, we'd like to see it happen.
It's not telling us we have to put the road in.
Gotcha. I'm just going off of the past experience.
Oh, yeah, and I...
Trying to avoid that, you know.
And I know where, yeah. Just because it's there doesn't mean it has to be built. It's there in case we want to, we need to, in the future.
But as far as the plan for Lot One... But as far as the plan for Lot One and everything, I mean, it fits right, right with our comprehensive growth plan that we just generated, so it's, I'm in favor for it, so.
One thing for people to know, it's currently zone, highway zoning, so it's something that we have requests to rezone.
Yep, we already have that in, so we're beginning to notice this this week for the next Plan Commission meeting to rezone.
And if you're curious, the change from highway to residential has a lot to do with that access point and lack thereof.
Would that be interesting for the DOT? You mean?
It would change the dynamics of the neighborhood.
It absolutely would.
Yeah.
Huh. Because when you have new information, sometimes you have to make different decisions.
Yeah, based on how many access points. You're pretty firm about how many you'd have in the room.
Okay.
I want to say the study was done in 16 on 12 and 18 there, and there was no more access points were going to be allowed on it. That was in a presentation I'd done somewhere in Dane County that was at. I'll try to find that report before the next Plan Commission meeting. That they, they're just, they're not giving any more access to that.
What's, why are talking about it, man?
It.
I think the village would be in favor of that, and it would make sense for a piece of the village, but, I don't know. So we're having this discussion of contacting MSA and just kind of exploring, is this, can this be done? What if we push it farther to the west? Can we get an access road in there? That would really help out, because Kentset Way is starting to get pretty congested.
We're getting into the next.
Yeah, okay.
So this isn't, we're just looking at the CSM today.
Okay, all right, getting in the weeds.
Okay, I understand.
Sorry, Chuck. They all tie together, the CSM that's before us.
Okay.
All right, so the both of you gentlemen are in favor of this thing?
Yep.
And.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we'll call the matter to vote here. All those in, in favor of approving the certified survey map request from Bill Ranguet, Badulent Properties, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Okay.
I'm, I'm still with, with Chuck and Eric. I, I worry about how much traffic, and I, I get the east and the west stuff.
Again, it's not on this agenda and.
I know. But I'm making that clear here.
It also raises our discussions on the crossing of 134. Do we move that up as another exit? And that one would then go into the stoplight and, so.
Okay.
There's a lot to unpack.
There's options, a lot.
There's a lot.
The CSM is before us today.
Okay.
And those things will have to be figured out in front of the Plan Commission next, you know, it might be March and April. Like, you know, it might take more than one meeting to, to figure this all out.
Yeah.
But I'll have the plans.
There's only two ways out of there. There's only two ways out.
Right now.
One.
Well, can go up through, wouldn't you?
Up with me.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
But still, you know.
Nobody does that.
But again, not on tonight's agenda, so.
Okay, okay.
Thanks, Todd.
That's the way I leave it, because I like going out of the stoplight.
All right, let's move on. Village Board Committee assignments.
So again, I have a memo in the packet when Tim Phelps resigned. Kristen was appointed to her position. At the time, Tim sat on the Cable Committee, the Joint Law Enforcement Committee, the Police and Fire Committee, and chaired the Licensing Committee. Trustee Whitworth has said he would be willing to, you know, step down from the Joint Law Enforcement.
So should I make a motion, just to?
Yeah, so, you know, it would, it could be the Joint Law Enforcement, Cable, the Licensing, that would be the three.
Make, make a motion to have Kristen Blackwood placed as the, in the seats that were vacated by Tim Phelps?
With the exception, Eric would stay on the Standing Police and Fire Committee.
With the exception of the Police and Fire Committee.
I'll second.
Okay. How do you feel about this, Kristen?
Good to go.
Okay. All right. Any other concerns, issues? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, you're going to work. Unfinished business? We don't have anything. Correspondence? I'm not seeing anything. Questions, referrals to staff, future agenda items? Next meeting, we will have Barbara Dietrich. This has been one that's been pushed around a little bit. Jay Weiss will be giving us an update on our tree canopy. I also have Dane County Sheriff Calvin Barrett. We've got some things, staffing, obviously happening, and just thought it'd be a good idea to have him come in and speak with us. Lisa, you've got, there's a special, well, not a special meeting, but you're going to have the Joint Law Enforcement before that, so.
Mm-hmm.
That'll be good if they want to be involved with that. And then finally, Village Board compensation. So, is there anything else that we want to have put on to either staff or future agenda items? Okay, all right. Upcoming meetings, February 20th, Water and Sewer, February 21st, Police and Fire Committee, February 21st, Library Board, the 27th is the Village Board, Economic Development Committee is to be determined, March 11th, Plan Commission, March 12th, Village Board, 13th, Library Board, 19th, Water and Sewer, 26th, Village Board, and Police and Fire be determined. Okay, so.
Right, Law Enforcement will be added on March 12.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get that changed. Okay, brings us up to item 13. Anybody help, please?
I'll make a motion to convene into closed session for 1985-1E. Deliberating or negotiating the purchase, the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This will involve the sale of village property and the purchase of property regarding Melster property and the Fire and EMS Commission.
I'll second.
All right, roll call.
Trustee Whitworth.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Chris Blackwood.
Yes.
Brian Egg.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. Okay, so we're going to go into closed session. Marco is going to collect all of his microphones. Thank you.